Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the November eighteenth meeting of the Wayne City Council. If I could have everybody please silence their phones and stand for the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mayor Racy.
Here.
Mayor Protem Brock.
Here.
Councilman Dowd.
Here.
Councilwoman Woss.
Here.
Councilman Quarles.
Here.
Councilman Darwich.
Here.
Councilwoman Lawrence.
Excused.
Quorum is present. First item on the agenda is to approve the agenda.
Move to approve, Woss.
Support Quarles. Questions, changes? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Second item is the city council minutes two A, regular meeting minutes of November third, 2025.
Move to approve, Dowd.
Support Darwish.
Questions, changes? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Now is time for the public questions regarding items on the agenda. Public comment is conducted in accordance with applicable laws. Public comment is limited to three minutes, which will begin when the speaker approaches the podium, unless the time is extended by a majority vote of the city council. All public comments shall be directed to the city council and they shall not respond. Public comment shall not be disruptive. Any violator of public comment procedures may be ordered to be seated immediately or removed by the chairperson of the meeting or the chairperson's designee.
Okay, any public questions on items on the agenda this evening? Yes.
I was just looking over the agenda and I knew that there was one on here about the recreation partnership. I'm trying to figure out and wrap my head around why we're doing that. I can understand maybe supporting some of their programs and that kind of stuff, but it would have been nice if the citizens had been able to participate in the whatever's going on with the rec because we were all still very much a part of when it went up. Thank you.
Any other public questions on the agenda this evening? Okay, seeing done, please move the agenda.
Item number three, boards, commissions, committees. Three A, approval of the resignation of Sharon Arthur Chestnut Street from the historical commission effective immediately.
Move to approve, Woss.
Support Brock.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Three B, approval of the appointed appointment of Mayor John Racy to the Recreation Partnership Committee.
Move to approve Quarles.
Support Darwish.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Three C, approval of the appointment of Councilman Rabih Darwich to the Recreation Partnership Committee.
Move to approve, Woss.
Support Quarles. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Three D, approval of the appointment of Councilwoman Kathy Lawrence to the Recreation Partnership Committee.
Move to approve, Dowd.
Support Woss.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Item number four A, revenue and expenditure report for period ending October twenty twenty five.
Receive and file.
Item, general items. Item five A, approval of the professional engineering services, drinking water state revolving fund, DWSRF, lead service, lead replacement project proposal from Stan Tech Consulting, Michigan Incorporated, Ann Arbor, Michigan, in the amount not to exceed one hundred ninety thousand dollars to be paid from the drinking water state revolving fund.
Move to approve, Dowd.
Support Brock.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
This this extension is to have Stan Tech help us finish the project out. This is to extend their services till June thirtieth of twenty six. And I'm fully confident that this should be the last extension we need to finish the project to finish with the galvanized, the remaining galvanized lines that we have. To date, we, I just looked at my numbers, we were somewhere around like, I think a thousand eighty lines replaced altogether. We have eight known lead lines. All of them are scheduled but four because they're vacant houses and we're working with the engineering department to get into those houses.
Any questions? Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, and this one hundred and ninety thousand is not coming out of our budget. It's coming out of the DWSRF fund, correct?
It originally gets paid out of our water funds and then we get reimbursed when we submit all the paperwork to the state to get reimbursed and and we're we're about roughly about eight hundred thousand left with the state grant and then we have another nine hundred thousand through the EPA to still use up too.
Thank you.
Do you want to give us just like a little overview of everything that's where we're at now?
Of?
Of the whole, with the whole lead line project to get us to where we're going with that? Because I know it's.
Yeah, we're with our known lead lines, like I said, we have about eight left. But everything's been scheduled but the last four because we're having trouble getting in. In our last update meeting, I I made a note that we're going to put those on our BSNA system so that when they do sell or somebody moves into them, that they will not be able to occupy that home until that line has been replaced. So that's how we'll catch it if we can't get into it now. We have about two hundred, I think it was two hundred and one galvanized lines left and that's all our known. Everything else, if we discover something, because we're going to start looking at some other unknowns that we have, but a lot of the unknowns on the list that I was looking at today are a lot of copper lines, a lot of buildings that have built, have been built since I've been here, so I know they're copper lines. So we're we're working on updating all our records and we're getting really close to having everything to a hundred percent.
So you're feeling real confident about where we're at with things?
Very confident.
That's great.
So.
Mayor, from me. So what I'm hearing is two hundred more outside of the ones you've been trying to schedule to the point where you're not getting a response and we're making notes with what then are filed within city clerk's office to make sure that they can't, you know, either they sell it, before they sell it, they make the improvement, or after they sell it, they've got to make the improvement to occupy.
Yeah, because what's going to happen is right now you can get it replaced with this project that we have free of charge and and once this project's over, if this, if these houses sell, say, three, four years from now, obviously, the new owner is going to have to take that responsibility.
This is a great countermeasure to have and the two hundred are in the future for next year.
For between between now and next year, we're going to try and get them all replaced before June thirtieth and these are the galvanized that were previously connected to lead. The way it used to work is a galvanized line runs straight, you can't bend it. So it had to have a way to get down to the water main and that part that went down to the water main was a lead gooseneck. So that's what we're running into now, so we're replacing all those. I wanted to focus on the ones that we knew were lead coming into the homes.
I I would, I just want to make one comment on this and I think the city has and DPW has done a great job of once being fortified fortified with the funds, you need to make it happen. I mean, we should be writing a how to book for small communities like ours to do it the right way. I am also concerned because, one last concern, which is just the satisfaction satisfaction at the person in the home who was fearful that, you know, they do have it. I'd still would like to have that check off where we're going, you know, some kind of way we're going door to door, checking with people to make sure.
If anybody calls us, we always go and double check, even if we've been there and we have a record of it, just for peace of mind. I like to go back and make sure.
Gladly campaign that once a week on my Facebook city page if if that, when the city's ready for that.
All right, I appreciate all your kind words, thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Is there a good way to know if you have lead coming in? Like what if you're checking your thing and it's copper going into your house?
So a lead line, there's a couple ways. One, it won't be, you can't put a magnet on it, it won't stick to it. And then there's a scratch test where you can scratch it and it'll look silver instead of like a penny.
And so what about the galvanized, though?
Galvanized would look silver, but a magnet would stick to it.
But a mag, okay, just for people that if they want to test themselves.
Oh, yeah, and and we do have that out there where they can self-report. It's on the on the homepage of the city website. So I worked with IT to get that out there and it goes through every step with the instructions on how to do it. They can take pictures and then once they give us their information, we can follow up with them.
Yeah, because I'm assuming we haven't tested every single house in the.
Not not every single house and a lot of people don't want us in their houses for one reason or another. I mean, it's a private area, but we just want to get it fixed and and have everybody safe and healthy.
I appreciate you.
Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item five B, approval of the police department's purchase of twenty-two Geisley Model One rifles with flow five point five six K suppressors in the amount of fifty-five thousand nine hundred ninety dollars from Geisley Automatics of North Wales, Pennsylvania, to be paid from the police department budget.
Move to approve Quarles.
Support Woss.
Hey, Chief.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. So as the deputy clerk noted, this request is to purchase twenty-two rifles and suppressors. Active shooters sadly have become kind of a part of our country. We've seen these incidents across the country. An active shooter incident was thwarted right here in the city of Wayne earlier this year. We've learned over the years that our rifles that we're using right now could use some improvement. We've had rifles since the early two thousands. Over the past twenty-five years, there's been a great deal of advancements in manufacturing and technology. More specifically, the rifles I'm suggesting we purchase are shorter barreled and they have suppressors. The shorter barrel quite simply allows officers to take the vehicle, the rifle, in and out of their cars more quickly. Reference the incident at Cross Point, when I watched the body camera footage, I noticed the officers had difficulty getting the rifles out of their car because they're simply longer and they're more difficult to maneuver. Suppressors, they cut down on the noise in an actual active shooter incident, so the officer can hear what's going on and they also reduce the muzzle, so the officer is not seen, they're trying to be covert. And in the long run, these rifles are not going to cost the city any money. The individual officers are going to purchase them back from the city through payroll deductions because the officers like to personalize the rifles with optics, slings, et cetera. So bottom line is these rifles are going to keep our officers safer and the community safer and it's not going to cost the city any money.
Yes.
You mentioned, it sounds like we don't have one standardized rifle within the PD on the cars.
So, sort of, so the the police department in the early two thousand, the police department purchased some Colt AR-15s. When we first got into those, most of the officers used those, now just a couple of the officers use those and most of the officers have their own rifles, but they're the traditional longer barrel rifles. So you are correct, right now they're not standardized.
I just, I know from a supply chain side of it that if you're buying one set of ammo, it's a lot easier to have that one set of ammo on in in the drawer than it is to have three or four or five different types of ammos.
Sure, and it's just, it's just good for all us to be on the same page, just like the same reason all the officers carry the same handgun.
One question, I know that this one was out there on the book of faces, is how do we come to twenty-two?
So we just polled the officers and every officer who wanted to purchase one from the city and that's how we came to twenty-two plus two extra with the idea that we've got some officers going to the academy in January.
Thanks, Drew.
Yes. And what happens to the old rifles, had they already purchased them from the city?
So the old rifles that the city purchased in the early two thousand, we'll keep those until these rifles are, we've received them, the officers are trained on them, they're fully operational and then we'll probably keep two or three on hand just as a backup if there was a rifle that was, you know, needed maintenance or something like that. And those additional rifles, we might most likely sell them to a local firearm shop and use the funds for ammunition.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, this is going to be a big morale boost for the officers, I know that, so I appreciate your support.
Wonderful, thank you.
Item five C, approval to hold a five-minute fireworks display at Hillcrest Bible Church in conjunction with the annual tree lighting ceremony on Friday, December fifth, twenty twenty-five.
Move to approve, Woss.
Support Darwish.
You want to say something or wait till the other? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And now it's time for the administration reports.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
To start off with the administrative report, I'm going to invite Lisa Cabane from our DDA to give you an update on some outstanding events that are forthcoming that I think you're going to be interested in hearing about and our public here and at home as well.
Thank you so much, thank you. Good evening to Mayor and all of our members of council. Thank you for having me, I am just here to update you on a few exciting events that we have coming up in the city of Wayne. You just approved the fireworks for our Christmas event and I will get to that. But first, I want to just bring your attention to November twenty-ninth. It is Small Business Saturday and I encourage and welcome all of you, all of our communities, all of our viewers to not only shop and support our downtown Wayne businesses, but our local communities as well, our surrounding neighbors. They need our help right now, community business is is down and they definitely need these events. So November twenty-ninth, we, the DDA, will be kicking off our Small Business Saturday event at Flowers in the Mitten, which is located at three four eight five two Michigan Avenue at ten AM. And from ten AM to twelve PM, we will be giving away fifty Small Business Saturday tote bags that are filled with information and coupons from our local businesses. Five of those bags will include gift cards that the winners can use immediately and hopefully shop locally right away. The celebration's going to continue from one to three at Karma Coffee, where we will be having a live acoustic music set by Barry Bricky. We welcome everybody to come and just relax and enjoy a nice cup of coffee, maybe some lunch at Karma Coffee from one to three. And then I want to speak directly to our amazing Wayne business owners. If you're hosting a Small Business Saturday promotion or event, if you want help promoting that event, if you'd like to send me any kind of information that you'd like me to print and include in our tote bags, please do so. My email is L K U B A N Y at cityofwayne.com or you can reach me at seven three four seven two 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 thousand and my extension is fourteen hundred. Next is our holiday tree lighting event and Santa is coming to the city of Wayne on Friday, December fifth, from five PM to nine PM. Our town square will be transformed into a glow-in-the-dark wonderland with activities and entertainment for all ages. The event will take place at both the Wayne Historical Museum and Hillcrest Bible Church. We're trying to create a full campus of our holiday fun for all of the families to enjoy. And this year, we're trying something new to try to help everybody and all the families that do come down enjoy the event more and spend a little bit less time waiting for Santa Claus. We are trying the Santa Fast Pass wristbands. It's going to be work, so we encourage families to please arrive early at about five o'clock if you can. We'll be giving out bracelets all evening, but the bracelets will be color-coded and it will, you'll be assigned a time block, basically. So you will have a small time block to go into the museum, wait a lot less in line and be able to enjoy the entire event as a whole, instead of waiting two hours in the freezing cold, hopefully. But with that, every child will receive a wristband and we will have volunteers, we'll have a lot of signage and our DJ will be making announcements like every thirty minutes. So we will be doing our very best to keep everybody on track and guided to where they need it, need to be. Besides that, we'll have a free family photo booth inside Hillcrest Bible Church where we'll have characters, you and your family can get pictures with the Grinch from six thirty to seven thirty or you can get pictures with Elsa from Frozen from seven thirty to eight thirty. And those pictures will be sent right to your phone. So the DDA will receive a file after the event and will be able to share those photos from the families that will allow us to, but each family will get their photo from the event that night. And then, of course, Hillcrest Bible Church will have free cookies and cocoa and crafts from six to eight. And we're having a show your glow contest. So families, we encourage you to dress up in your best glow-in-the-dark ensemble and we will be giving away prizes to the most creative adult and child costume. To participate, you just simply have to upload a picture of you in your costume to either the DDA Facebook page or you can email it to me if you don't have Facebook, that's fine. But I just need that picture by nine PM on that Friday, December fifth. Be sure you include your phone number so I can give you a call and let you know if you win. Winners will be announced the next day, December sixth, and prizes will be given the next week. So for that event, please be advised that there will be some road closures, so please bring your patience. We'll be closing Biddle Street, Park Street and Main Street. Those are the roads that surround Hillcrest from five to nine and Newberry Street will be closed from six to nine for our wagon rides. So again, the entire surrounding area around Hillcrest will be closed basically from five PM to nine PM. If you have any questions, you are feel the free to reach out to me personally. We will have accessible parking available in all the surrounding lots around Hillcrest. And on behalf of the DDA, I just want to thank you all for allowing us to have fireworks and for allowing us to help promote the wonderful businesses in the city of Wayne. Thanks, thank you.
Thank you very much, Lisa. Okay, so that was the fun stuff. So I just want to give you some updates on a couple of our major projects. The updates on Gowdy, so the area around the pump house was cleared of debris. The land had been cleaned up and leveled, topsoiled and seeded and matted. So if you remember, it had kind of a big hill with gravel and it was looking pretty messy and big chunks of concrete over there. They cleaned it all up, they did a really a beautiful job, it looks better than I can ever remember it now. So they did all that this week, we also got that defective beam, the one beam that we were waiting for to finish the roof. Well, we have it and it's installed. So it's up there, now we just have to finish the roof. So if you look at the stage, it's got a big pile of materials on it. That is the roofing materials to go up this. That is the roofing materials to go up this week. And if weather permits, 'cause it's really crazy this time of year, we'll have it done by the end of the week. But if it doesn't, it decides to rain for three days, it might go into early next week. But we're really on track to get it done, um, within the next week to week and a half. So, um, so that's all good news. And at the end of that, the Phase 1 of the Gaudi Park renovation will be completed, um, this month on schedule. So, uh, that takes me to the parking structure. So, if you've had a chance to go by the parking structure and see the beautiful parking lot that's right in front of the library doors, which I just think is such a great thing, as somebody who was a, a mother of a young one, taken to the library and trying to unload all their things as it is, and then having to walk from the parking structure through all... Now, they're right out in front of the door. It's also very, much more accessible for elderly folks, people, you know, wheelchairs, whatever. It just makes getting in the library so much easier, so much more accessible and safer. So, I'm really ecstatic about that. They got the whole parking lot in. They got the curbs in. They got it striped. Um, they've done the top-soiling and the, um, the grass mats out around it, but it's, uh, not completed. They're still working on it. What, what they've done this, uh, last week is they've gone below grade, and they broke up everything below grade, 'cause you know that the parking structure went underground, and all the way to everything that's on grade. So, they've already removed all the debris from the grades up or off the site. The degrees that you, the debris that you see there now is just what they dug up from below in grade level. So, they're getting very close to the end of that process. Uh, today, they poured the driveway access from the roundabout, so you know how you would pull in and go into the, um, old parking structure. Now, they've poured the driveways into the new library parking lot, and there's a small access for library employees that park, there's a few cars that park behind the building. So, they've redone that. They're basically doing, they're gonna finish cleaning up the rest of the debris over the next week and a half or so. And then, um, they still have to put the light poles back and, um, mat and seed the rest of the area. And, uh, we're right on time to get that done before the end of the year here, too. So, um, so both of those projects are coming along, and they do say, and I never knew this, but, 'cause I was thinking those, putting seed out in November, but you know what? It lays dormant in those mats, and then it, um, it all takes root in the spring and, and comes up. So, and then they said if whatever doesn't, they come back and seed at no extra cost. So, um, we're well on our way with both those projects. We should have them wrapped up by the end of the year. And then, spring is gonna be very, very busy. We have so many good things going on in 2026. We're gonna be starting Phase 2. So, Phase 2 of, uh, Gaudi Park, which will be replacing the parking lot at the lower court, the stairs, the entranceway off of Second Street, uh, the, um, we're gonna get the seeding for the, um, the, by the pavilion, the concession area, finish everything we need to do in the pump house there. Um, I am, I am hoping that we can work with the DDA to get our parking lot redone, but that has not been approved. But I am, it's my report, and I can tell you I'm working in that direction, 'cause it needs to happen. Um, if it's not this year, then maybe it'll be next year, or, you know, but, but it really, would really like to see a new parking lot on both sides. The one at the, the court and the entranceway, which will be by the mural, you'll come in and see through the entranceway. You will have the mural there. All the food trucks will be there. All that ugly fencing will be gone. The beautiful landscaping will be completed. The amphitheater and lights and everything will be set to go with that. Then we'll do the new playscape and the new splash pad. And, um, so the park is really gonna be beautiful. We are also working on a grant to, for connectivity of the trails, so you can go from the Mill Trail to the Washington Trail through Gaudi. Kinda gotta go up and around a little bit to cross at the light, but that is a, a grant that has been submitted to SEMCOG through their TAP grant application. So, I want, it's important for me to let you know everything that's been approved and everything that we're trying to do, right? Um, and we'll keep you posted, uh, as it goes. But, uh, Gaudi, uh, should be absolutely remarkable by the time we're done with it next year. And then, the, we have the $210,000 grant to replace the mile walk path at Atwood, and we have the money from $27,000 from Wayne County to do the pickleball courts in JC. And then, construction starts on the Infinity Home Project. So, we are just really cooking with gas. We got a lot of things going on, and they're all positive. So, I just wanted to give you guys an update on, uh, things we're wrapping up and things we're looking forward to. And I'll take any questions if you have them. We're good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now it's time for public comments for matters not on the agenda. Public comment is conducted in accordance with applicable laws. Public comment is limited to three minutes, which will begin when the speaker approaches the podium, unless the time is extended by a majority vote of the city council. All public comments shall be directed to the city council, and they shall not respond. Public comments shall not be disruptive. Any violator of public comment procedures may be ordered to be seated immediately or removed by the chairperson of the meeting or the chairperson's designee.
Any, uh, public comments on matters not on the agenda this evening? Yes.
I'm Gary Kaufman of Westland, Michigan, formerly of this great town of Wayne, Michigan, and I aspire to set the record, uh, for the briefest public comment ever. Mayor Racy, you are looking really sharp these days.
Thank you. Vern? Hold on. Nancy, I got Vern's coming up.
Don't wanna cut him off at the pants.
Wouldn't be hard to do nowadays. Evening, uh, council, mayor. Uh, my name's Vern Amos, and I live on Stellwagen. Um, I have a couple of questions, again, about supposedly Dan's Ice Cream. Is it ever gonna open? Is it gonna be like Long John Silver's and never get around to it? Uh, are we making any money on the, uh, uh, permits? And again, across from Karma Coffee, what's up with that? Is it still being checked out by the engineering group? This is the second time I've brought that up. And Michigan Avenue, they repaved westbound through our downtown area, but they didn't raise the manhole covers, the round ones, and they are a pain in the butt. Um, to drive in, you know, 30 miles an hour, 35 further out of town, you hit one of them suckers that's two inches below the pavement, and it really thumps on your tires. So, I hope they can correct that. And my pet peeve is Newburgh between Glenwood and the bridge. It needs to be resurfaced, or if we had the money, uh, in our road fund, needs to be widened to match the rest of Newburgh that is north of Glenwood. Thank you.
Thank you. Nancy?
I could cut him off at the pants. No. Um, Nancy Pride. Um, I'm, thank you very much, uh, city manager, um, for the explanation that I was going to talk about. So, thank you very much for explaining that. I was just trying to figure out how, and I, I know that as you get aged, uh, time seems to fly, but I definitely remember when we were in almost receivership. Um, I remember that my street was only plowed once a month unless it was absolutely terrible and that they had to fix it. So, I, I was just kind of, why and how did we get to this epiphany of spending? So, thank you. Um, the other one on, on Newburgh Road is more dangerous than just the surface. Um, as you're going south on Newburgh Road and you reach where it's down to two lanes, there used to be a drugstore there. There's now a Dollar Tree there. They left the lane that, in my view, should be for right turns only into that store. Not a place where someone that's behind you does not like the fact that you're doing the speed limit, and they shoot around you and go down there and force their way into the line of traffic. That should be a right turn only into Dollar Tree. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Public comment on, on matters not on the agenda? Anyone else this evening? I'm gonna have the city manager just answer the one thing, 'cause we were asked that last week.
Yeah, and I did, I have addressed it before, but I'll address it again. Um, and I can address both of those things, really. Dan's Ice Cream is hung up in a legal battle. And we have been issuing vacant property fees and everything as we're supposed to. Um, but there is nothing we can do to expedite the court proceedings. Um, the building across from Karma Coffee was actually, and I was originally told it was Eagle, but it wasn't. It was MyOSHA that was the agency that requested, um, that a certain contractor, uh, be shut down. So, not the whole construction site is shut down, just the work of one contractor that was deemed not safe. And so, in order for them to get working again, they have to show compliance, um, with MyOSHA's rules. So, um, they've been locked out of the job from the city, too, until they comply with MyOSHA, and they can get that moving. In the meantime, all precautions have been taken to make the, the site safe. Um, and so, that's where we're at right now. And again, when you get tied into other agencies that are bigger than us, we have to wait until they're done doing what they're doing, but it's good for us. It helps us protect, protect our residents, too, by MyOSHA being out there and holding those contractors to a standard. So, um, that's in process. I can continue to report on that as things change in my administrative report to keep the public up to date. Gladly do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead and move the agenda, please.
Item number seven is the consent calendar with two sets of minutes. 7A, Wayne Historical Commission Meeting Minutes of July 14th, 2025, and 7B, Wayne Downtown Development Authority Meeting Minutes of October 8th, 2025.
Move to approve, Voss.
Support, Darwish.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Now it's time for comments from members of the city council.
Councilman Quarles?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I'm gonna be briefed tonight. Chief, it's great to see, um, the rifles. I think that is an amazing thing. And in this time that we live in, unfortunately, uh, those weapons are needed. And I, I'm just glad that you had the forethought to come to us to get that approved. So, again, hats off to you, chief, and your department. You guys are amazing. Just pass that along. Uh, Diane, the things we've got going on in this city is just frickin' amazing to me. I'm so excited for next year. Um, the splash pad, I can't wait. Uh, John and I, Speedos, we've already talked about it.
You didn't talk to me there.
So, I, I just am really excited, and, and kudos to you and the whole staff for what you all do. Uh, I think that we have one of the best staffs and some of the best people in our city working. Uh, you know, Ms. Cabane, I, I can't say enough about you. You're amazing. Uh, you've got so much going on all the time, and I just appreciate you. From the bottom of my heart, I think you are an amazing person. So, um, and with, uh, last thing I'm gonna say is it is Thanksgiving coming up. Um, there is a lot of less fortunate people out here, uh, homeless people, um, in particular. Take a minute and think about them. You know, we all go home and we got a warm bed to lay in. Some people don't have that. Our veterans, you know, some of them are homeless. So, take a minute and think about them. Check on the elderly. Um, you know, there are people out there that don't get to spend time with their families, or their families have passed, and they have no one. Take a minute, go next door, and maybe you have an elderly person. Knock on the door and say, hey, just checking on you. You don't know what that does to somebody. So, and I wanna wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, a safe Thanksgiving. And with that, I'll pass.
Okay. Uh, Councilman Darwish?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to first, uh, thank the DPW for working tirelessly during the cold, um, for taking care of that water main break on Howe Road. Every time I drive by, they're just there, and, um, so I just wanted to thank them for their hard work. And then also, I, I also wanted to touch on briefly the homeless, uh, concern, you know, that was mentioned in our last session as well. Uh, so here's a, a resource. Uh, Lighthouse Ministries, uh, will be operating a warming center this winter, and it starts on January 1st through March 30th, 8:00 AM through 7:00 PM. And also, if anyone would like to donate, uh, food, blankets, pillows, coats, boots, uh, for men and women, backpacks and socks, underwears, coffee, food, it would be appreciated. And, um, and then, uh, also, um, if anyone has any new or, or gently-used coats in good condition, please drop them off in the front lobby of Hype Athletics. Jeff, uh, Frazier, set up a big box. Um, and all coats will be donated to the homeless shel-, uh, shelters in Detroit and the surrounding areas. And then, lastly, um, November 22nd, uh, at the senior towers, we'll, we'll be hosting, uh, their Thanksgiving dinner for the seniors. And I just wanna thank everybody, Jeff Frazier and everybody else, uh, for their generous donations, uh, to make that possible. And thank you for the administration, and please make sure it's warm this year for the tree lighting ceremony. Thank you.
Councilman Dowd? Does that mean? Yes. Thank you. Mayor's trying to make sure we're paying attention today with this new order. Yes. I was paying attention. You can hear me. I wanna echo what, uh, Councilman Quarles had to say. There is certainly, uh, coming into that time of year where not everybody reacts the same way to the holidays. And that doesn't mean anything other than maybe people, some people just need a different level of attention and support, and that's, that's okay, too. It's okay to be generous and kind and, and neighborly in this day and age, and I support that 100%. Um, Knights Columbus had their coat giveaway this past weekend. Uh, they had two rounds of giveaways. They had 800 coats that they had procured from, uh, Knights Columbus, uh, the corporate office. Uh, they were the single biggest, uh, taker of coats for all the Southwest Detroit Knights Columbus, uh, locations. Uh, they held their first, their first giveaway in support with Salvation Army. That didn't, uh, pan out as well as they had hoped. Um, and then, this past weekend, they held it at the property on Wayne Road. Um, and then, after that, they're going to donate whatever is left and move forward with that. So, uh, this is a program they've been doing for some years now. It's a great program. Uh, it's, I think it's time to shine some positive light back on this and, uh, support it across the state, across our little city, um, in the future years. Um, curious on the glow-in-the-dark, uh, comment. Is there's difference between glow-in-the-dark and black light impact? So, glow-in-the-dark, you have to glow all on your own. So, just curious if it's something I have to glow all on my own by glow-in-the-dark? Or am I black light responsive? I know this because, uh, our, uh...
That's right.
Color, color councilman knows the difference. Correct? You are correct. So, I, I would, I would like to know before I start... So, I would, I would like to know before I start making my outfit for this event.
See what you did.
I can't wait to see what I get.
Not that it's a competition or anything, but...
It is a competition.
Winning is everything. And lastly, I just want to wish everybody a happy and safe Thanksgiving as Thursday quickly approaches, and all I can hope for is a win on that Thursday. We gotta win that game. Win, win, win. With that, I'll pass. Okay. Councilman Ross?
I just wanted to say a happy Veterans Day to all our veterans out there. Hope you had a good day, and thank you for your service. Happy Thanksgiving to everyone. Hopefully, everyone is home and eating, but yes, check on your neighbors, please. Excited about the tree lighting on this, on the 5th, but if you're interested in doing a fun toy drive, you can go out to MIS and drive around the track four times if you donate some toys. Get to drive on the MIS track, which we do every year. But that, what that brought me to was look around for Toys for Tots. They're all over the place. Think you'll have one, right? Toys for Tots bucket? Yep, so look around for, so not just, not just coats, but we're getting close to the Christmas thing, and Toys for Tots starts now as well, so, so yeah, happy Thanksgiving. With that, I'll pass.
Mayor Protem?
I just wanted to thank Ms. Coveney for all the work that you're doing. It sounds like you're turning City of Wayne into a little Christmas town, and I know Santa Claus and Mrs. Claus are gonna be very happy about that. I'm looking forward to the holiday night. I'm also interested in the coloration and whether it's gonna be exuded or it's gonna be with the black light, right? That's the concern, right? Okay. And then, everybody, we shop local, right? You're supporting small, you're supporting your neighbors and yourself, and they really do have a lot of nice things on sale here in Wayne that you can, you can pick up at reasonable prices, and you can see your neighbors and meet your new neighbors and make some new friends. Thank you to the administration for making the city safer, Chief, for the work that you're doing, our legal department, Mr. Schmidt, and all the folks at DBW and all, all of the departments, making it easier to get people in and out of the city, making it pleasant to get in and out of the city, mostly in, right? Because then they can stay now, okay? All right, and have fun. So, thank you very much, and I'm looking forward to the coming weekend so that we can all enjoy time together. And if there's anything I can do to help anyone in the city, please don't hesitate to contact me. I am your City Council person, and I will help you in any way I can. Thank you.
Thank you. Few things, just a reminder for the council and anybody who wants to come out to help. The Veterans Meal Program is this weekend at the Wayne Ford Civic League. The veterans start showing up at 10:00, so probably be there around 9:00 would be great if you're able to help this year. We had the CWW Conference of Western Wayne. We hosted them here in the city on Friday, and we had a really full house, and everything went really, really well. Were able to share a few things about what's going on in our city, and then having them here, and very complimentary, and everybody had a, it was a very, very productive meeting. And then, on Sunday, I got to represent the city. Ford Motor Company asked me to come out to the Ribbon Grand Opening, whatever you call for the world headquarters, and that was pretty neat, to get to take a tour of that, and was there to see them take down the curtain to unveil the Ford logo on the new property. That's 2 million square feet of, of corporate offices. It's pretty neat to just see what they're doing over there and how that'll translate here. Got to see prototypes for the new Bronco, which was pretty neat, too. And then, want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and Toys for Tots, US 12 is gonna be having Toys for Tots drops, Kurt's Caps, I know those two off the top of my head are places that you can drop off things for Toys for Tots. And I believe you're doing, the Goodfellows are at, you can pick up your stuff here at the City Hall or at Hype, and then you have a Salvation Army give angel tree that's gonna be out there so that you can also pick off kids off the tree and be able to help kids right in the here in the community as another way to do stuff. So, with that, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn?
Support Quarles.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Have a great night.